For watching the 2024 Fall Candidate Forums hosted by the Ashland Chamber of Commerce. My name is Eli Katkin. I'm a Chamber member and owner and operator of The Brick Room here in Ashland. Joining me in moderating the discussion is my friend Mary Gardner, the past president of the Chamber. And today we'll be introducing City Council candidates for position number two. So we'd like to welcome Kelly Markatouli and Jeff Dale. Thanks for joining us today. So we'll just talk a little bit real quick about the format of the discussion here today. Each candidate will be given a two-minute opening statement. Following the opening remarks, the candidates will be asked a series of questions with three minutes to respond. A bell will ring, and then candidates have 30 seconds after the initial bell is rung, and then 10 seconds after that, and then you'll have one more bell that will ring indicating your time is up. Following, any follow-up questions determined by moderators, either Mary or myself, will be given two minutes utilizing the same bell system that we discussed before. And just real quick, each year, the Ashland Chamber hosts legislative forums. This year, we're hosting forums for the Ashland City Council, the Ashland Parks Commission, Jackson County Commissioners, and the Oregon State Representatives. This forum is being recorded for viewing on RV TV cable networks, and will also be available through the RV TV app, as well as the Ashland Chamber website at ashlandchamber.com. And so before we started, we flipped a coin to see who would go first, and Jeff won the coin toss. So the opening statements, the opening remarks, and we'll start with you. And so the question is, tell us a little bit about why you're running. Briefly discuss your skills and your accomplishments that qualify you to serve as an Ashland City Council.
Excellent. Thanks. Well, first off, Eli, Mary, thank you so much to SOU and the Chamber and Kelly for being here. This is incredibly important that we have an opportunity to be able to talk and to discuss, and just very grateful to be here. So a little bit about myself. I was born and raised in Ashland. I didn't know it at the time. One of the greatest gifts my parents gave to me and my younger brother was the decision to plant roots in this small southern Oregon town. I didn't know it at the time. When you're born and raised here and you grow up, and I went through K through 12 here, I was the first sixth grade class of the new Ashland Middle School, but when you grow up, you just want to leave and explore the world and go out. But myself, along with my wife, after pursuing interests and careers and so forth for a few years, you just realize that there is just no more amazing place in this world than Ashland, Oregon. So it took a little bit to come back and figure out logistics with kids in school and so forth. But we've been back for over a decade. We have three kids that actually live here with us. We live in town. And to be honest with you, I just, as you get older, you realize the things you take for granted. You realize all of the things that just make this incredible environment, our life, amazing here in this small town. And that's 30 seconds, right? Okay, thanks. Sorry. And so anyway, it was, at that point, it was, as I started to figure out, how can I give back? How can I pay it forward? How can I contribute to this? I started on commissions and committees, and then, as we'll get into a little bit later, it just, I was called to step up and jump in and help. And that's why I chose to serve on council.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Kelly, question for you. So tell us a little bit about why you're running. Briefly discuss some of your skills and your accomplishments that qualify you to serve as an Ashland City Councilor.
Okay. So, thank you again. And as Jeff said, I want to reiterate the great opportunity this is to engage in the political process and have an open forum for discussion about our priorities. So I'm running because this is my home. And I love the saying that you love where you live and you protect what you love. So this was my core motivation for seeking a council position. In 1999, I visited a friend here and immediately was entranced by this beautiful serenity, the nature, the surroundings we have here, the stunning beauty, and the reverence for Mother Nature. My goal here is to honor what makes Ashland so unique. So the reason why I'm running is because over the past six years, as I've engaged with the council, I've seen a direction that I would like to reverse. I've seen taxpayer money wasted, and it's important that there be more transparency in our government. And that's what I want to bring as a councilor to the people of Ashland. The qualifications I have stem from my 30-year career as a teacher. I have very strong communication skills, and I love to collaborate. And that is one of the things that I feel is important when you're seeking to solve problems and you have to listen to the residents who are part of the solution. I am the executive director, sorry, I was, I resigned, executive director for Oregon for Safe Technology, which is a safe tech organization, where have sister organizations across the nation. And this position led me to understand more about what cities need to do in order to protect themselves from corporate influence. So those are some of the things that I feel are important for Ashland, and this is why I'm running.
Great. Thank you. So Kelly, or, yeah, Kelly, you'll be the first to answer this question. Our first one is, tell us the top three issues or challenges you feel Ashland is facing.
Top three? Well, one, of course, would be the issue of affordable housing and low-paying jobs. Another one, of course, would be our homelessness problem that we understand is so multifaceted in the reasons why people are homeless. But we also have resources that are being put forward to solve the homeless issue. And the third main issue that I would see is a lack of trust in the city council right now. And these are issues that have been brewing. Decisions that the council have made recently make the citizens question the reasons why and where the funding came from for some of these decisions. Did I answer your question?
You did.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And so Jeff, the same question. What do you feel are the same, are the three top issues or challenges you feel that Ashland is facing?
Sure. And I realized I was remiss in answering the last part of the first question, which is what were qualifications? And so I have a career that spans over 30 years of, I've been in engineering, engineering leadership, a director of technical solutions, engineering, and analytics. So I love solving complex problems. I have an innate curiosity to just figure out how things and solutions work and then come up with novel ideas and to figure out how we can move forward. So I just love working on issues. So that brings us to this question, which is, what are the top three things in my mind? And it's tough to arrive at three. So I look at the most critical ones. And the first one for me is infrastructure and wildfire. It is, we use the word existential quite a bit, an existential threat. But as we learned four years ago in Almeda, existential means your house is there today and it's gone tomorrow. Not in 10 years, not in 20 years. It is gone the next day. And so I am, if we are to pay it forward, if we are to protect the future generations of Ashland, we owe it to ourselves now, as people did for us. People made decisions years ago that are affecting us now for better and for worse, but we are there to, it is our, we are tasked with protecting our infrastructure, our water supplies, our forest resiliency. Number two, as Kelly mentioned, there is, there's an affordability issue. There's an unhoused issue that we need to solve. That takes partnership with other entities, too. It's not something that Ashland can solve by itself, but we have to have partnerships with other communities, with other organizations. And then thirdly, layered on top of that is solid economic development. Is, we are in a new world relative to monetary and fiscal policies, and they affect small business owners. They affect residents. They affect a community. Decisions that are made at a national and state level sometimes seem abstract or not, but it affects where we live. It affects where we go to work. It affects school. It affects our family. It affects our children, childcare. And so local governments are being tasked with doing more with less and coming up and having to solve for issues that many times were not of our own creating. You know, this is our community. How do we, how do we solve these novel problems that didn't exist 20, 30 years ago? Didn't exist 10 years ago, but now we're being asked to do that with limited resources. Unlike at the federal level, we have to work off a balanced budget. You know, we have to make decisions. A dollar spent here is a dollar not spent there. And how do we help our small businesses? How do we help our residents? How do we help economic growth so that we can actually create more resources for our community?
Great. Thank you.
Great timing as well. All right. Thank you for your answers. Second question, I believe Kelly will start this one.
I think Jeff will start.
Jeff, actually, got it backwards. Jeff, you're going to start this one. There are many areas people wish to pursue as they enter into elected office. So unlike the first one, we're talking about issues and challenges here. What are your priorities? And specifically, how would you fund them? And in cases where they don't require money, how would you go about achieving your strategic objectives?
I would answer that first by saying, I think that what makes me a little bit different for a candidate for elected office is I don't have a stance for one issue that I want to bring. And I find that when there are individuals in the community that have one issue, that that's important to them, and that's, that's good. That's okay. You need, you need folks to care about issues that they care about. For me, part of local government, part of leadership is being able to balance. You'll see me come back to this theme over and over again, which is, which is nuance, which is balanced leadership, which is being able to take multiple ideas, multiple priorities, and figuring out how do we use our resources? How do we spread that across the, again, our limited fiscal resources to be able to solve for helping as many citizens as possible most of the time? As far as what I'm interested in, how we would do that, and we'll dive into this probably a little bit later, it is infrastructure. It is, where do you come up with these things? We, you know, Ashland's interesting. We have our own utilities. They, what I love about that, as much criticism as we get from time to time, as a city, one thing that we are not concerned about with our local utilities is shareholder value. Our stakeholders are our citizens. In fact, we hesitate to even call them customers. They're our residents. They're our community members. It is, it is a priority. It is, again, the things you take for granted, to be able to walk 10 steps and to turn on your faucet and have cool, refreshing water come out, to be able to have as best as possible clean air, is streets, all of this infrastructure that we just, that makes life amazing here. How fortunate are we? So to answer your question relative to the fiscal, it depends on what the issue is. It depends on asking the right questions. It depends on investigating all possible alternatives, which is what I pride myself on doing at council. I will, if you go back and you watch all of my council sessions, I have, I have almost always said, what are the alternatives that you didn't pursue that arrived to get to you? What were the opportunity costs that we had to give up? What, how did you balance this decision? It's the best that we could possibly come for. And sometimes we get it wrong, too. But one of the things that we have to be able to do, too, is to be able to not double and triple down on a, on an incorrect or a decision that was made with, with not having all available information. That's the great thing, is to be able to be humble enough to be able to back out and say, you know what? We're going to get this right on take two.
Okay. Great. Thank you for your answer, Jeff.
Sure.
And for Kelly, there are many areas people wish to pursue as they enter into elected office. So what are your priorities? And how would you fund them? Or in cases where money is required, what are some of your strategies to achieve your objectives?
Great. So great question. I think the issue of communication and collaboration is one of my key priorities here in becoming a city councilor. From what I have seen, there is a lack of communication that really engages the public in the decisions being made here. And collaboration, of course, is something I would pursue as well. And I think that's one of my key, key points to make. As well, I feel like the health and wellness issue of our city is paramount. We've got to help our community understand that in order to thrive and live a healthy life, there are certain decisions we have to make. And this is to your question about how would you implement these ideas? So the communication issue, right now, the council holds coffee, coffee and chats, or something along those lines, but they're few and far between. And what I would propose is that the, the city councillors actually adopt a geographical area of the city, and they become a liaison with a more personal connection to that geographical area, in which they could go in and have specific conversations, either at a park, at a coffee house. And there would be a neighborhood liaison in that area who would facilitate, that's the word I'm looking for, that communication. The other issue is conservation. And I feel that when I see tax dollars spent in ways that I don't understand why they were spent that way, and one example I would throw out would be the trash cans that we spent money on, $5,000 trash cans in downtown. I believe there were eight of them. That, you do the math, that's $40,000 that perhaps could have been spent better, more wisely, in a different form. And if there was a grant given to the city, hey, here's a bunch of money for beautification, which could be the very case I'm talking about, where's that admittance, or where's that information to be presented to the, to the residents? So we go, oh, that's how that happened. So there's not all these question marks. The green bike lane that was just recently painted on the south side of town, I'm all for bike safety and saving lives. And we understand that accidents happen with bikes, and we have to figure out a way to keep cyclists safe. But why do it to the extent that that green paint was slathered the way it was? Medford, they put it strategically in front of driveways and areas where the drivers will see the cycle lane and prevent accidents in that, in that way. So two minutes is hard to, we're going to get in a lot of information, but there you go.
Okay. Great.
Great. Thanks, Kelly. So the last question that we have is, how do you intend to work collaboratively with community partners such as the Chamber and Travel Ashland?
Well, that's a great question, because I know very little about the Chamber of Commerce, even though I was, I am, well, I was. I don't have my Pilates. I'm a Pilates teacher, and I had a very small private practice in my home. And I have since dropped the majority of my clients. And I never felt, well, I never received an invitation, but maybe that's on me. Maybe it would have been my job to reach out to Chamber and say, hey, I'm a new business in town, Chamber. How can I interact with you? So I think the Chamber, it's imperative that the Chamber also figure out ways to interact with new business owners and, and offer their services, because obviously, this, this position, this role that you're playing here is so valuable. And I would like to see better outreach in the, from the Chamber. Travel Ashland, I know very little about, probably for the same reason that I just said. There hasn't been a lot of information. I think most residents would go, what is Travel Ashland? It is a, as I, as I understand it, is a division of the Chamber. And the city pays into Travel Ashland to produce a report, which I have sit into council chambers and heard this report. And it's very enlightening, informative. But again, how is that impacting or how is that affecting? How is that benefiting residents of Ashland? Where we're looking to find out, how can we save the black sheep? How can we help businesses like The Brick Room if they're struggling financially? So economic opportunity should be a goal, and revival of Ashland's businesses needs to be better integrated in, in the Chamber, in, and OSF is doing their, their job. But I would say that would be one of the things that I would look for to get more information from the Chamber on.
And Jeff, I would ask you the same question. So how do you intend to work collaboratively with community partners such as the Chamber and Travel Ashland?
Sure. Well, just to back up a half step, too, relative to communication and collaboration in general, one of the things that is what I think is wonderful about the city of Ashland and our local government is, is I get emails and phone calls all the time. My phone number, my, all of our counselors and, and department heads, their emails are posted on the website. And it is amazing how quickly, out of all of the stuff that's getting done and all of their, their daily jobs, how quickly an email, a comprehensive email will, will come back to you within hours, maybe a day. And I'm always welcome to just call me up or shoot me an email, and we'll go down and I'll buy the coffee. As far as conversations, I can talk about this stuff for a long, and I appreciate those dialogues. And that's, that's what we're, that's what we're about. Relative to the Chamber and Travel Ashland, I think that there is a wealth of institutional knowledge there. And appreciate all that they have done and continue to do. That said, one of the things that occurred to me when I first decided to, to step up to serve in council was we are, we're solving, we tend to are trying to solve 20th century problems, or 21st century problems with 20th century tools. And the question is, especially relative to economic development. I mean, growing up here, I remember a half a million people, 400,000 people coming through here from March through October. And that was what the, the economic base was built on, that and SOU. And five, six, seven years ago, and then COVID, that, that changed with wildfire, with COVID, with, and now we have to look and say, what are the new, what are the four-season type economic ideas that we can have? What would I love to see with Chamber and Travel Ashland is more dialogue, more collaboration, more open forums? My, my hope in, in talking with the Chamber and Travel Ashland, and I know it's their hope, too, is, is a calendar of events that is just packed with things. We talked about it last night in council. We, there was a, we're having a 150th birthday celebration for Ashland, and it just kind of, it's like, those are the things that you just want, one after another, after another, after another of events, that people, we talk about opportunity costs. You want residents, you want tourists, you want people that live in surrounding areas to say, I choose to spend my time in Ashland. There is no place I'd rather be. And the way you do that is that you drive home the fact that there's always something happening in Ashland. And that's what I would strive to, to work toward with the Chamber and Travel Ashland.
And I appreciate that. I think in listening, it's, it's always informative to hear that from a, you know, about the Chamber and that perspective, in that the Chamber does do a lot in this community that I don't think people realize. The Chamber, for instance, the Fourth of July parade, or we'll be having the Halloween parade. I think people think sometimes the city does that, but those are Chamber events. And I think this conversation says, too, that maybe there needs to be a little more conversation between, just to make sure that people are realizing what all happens. And, you know, in the case of a small business that you have, there is, you know, there's 500 Chamber members, and there is a very, the greeters every Friday are usually very small businesses, one to two people. That is very active. And so, but that's good information, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Both of you spoke to affordable housing and some of the homeless issues that we're having, some of the complexities. It's just a quick follow-up question. You know, what are some of the ideas that you would like to have or bring to the table to address the homeless issues that we're having here in Ashland? I think Kelly was first this time?
Okay. So affordable housing. Well, as I understand it, the city has properties, and SOU has properties that could be rehabbed. I would hate to see mass developments and cookie cutter houses, and we don't have the space for that, obviously. I do not believe we should extend our urban growth boundary. And I do believe that affordable housing is, is a possibility by utilizing current properties and finding ways to resurrect them. So we keep the character of Ashland with our beautiful historic homes and not expanding to a point where we look like other overdeveloped areas. The affordable housing issue, and what was the other?
The other portion of that was, it was related to homelessness, homeless issue.
Oh, that's a great question. So the council put on a great presentation a few months or so ago. And what I learned from watching that was that we have, of course, we know that there are multiple reasons why it become, why people become homeless. It's poverty, it's misfortune, it's drug addiction, it's mental illness. All of that needs to be addressed in some format. And there are many grants that the city has applied for, and maybe Mr. Dale will speak to that, that have helped to fund ORA, that have helped to create better services for the homeless. But the solution will lie as well in finding more case managers slash social workers who can be that middleman between the homeless person and the resources. Because sometimes we have to educate the homeless, because they've been out of society for so long that they're, they don't, they don't remember how, you know, or they've lost context with how to run a household, or, or engage and be a renter. So I would say those tools of having case managers and, and better services.
And just to clarify, would those case managers be city employees or?
No, I do not believe we have a city budget for those case managers, but there are plenty of organizations out in Southern Oregon that we could pull from.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Jeff?
Same question.
Same question.
Excellent. So you're right. And even though there's a lot of overlap, you do kind of have to take those into separate buckets, so to speak. There's affordable housing, and then there's unhoused. To start with affordable housing, it, you have to back up and you have to look at, you know, what levers can we pull as a city? The city is in business, so to speak. The city municipal government is tasked with providing essential services. We are not tasked with, with changing market dynamics. You cannot get a developer to come in and build at a loss. You can't, there's just certain things that, that we can't do. So we have to just recognize that. And then we have to ask ourselves, well, what can we do? What, what are the tools in the toolkit that we can do? As Kelly mentioned, too, and she's, she's right with, we can land bank. We can, how do we make it more affordable so that a developer can come? How do we create partnerships to be able to, to incentivize affordable building by providing the land? If we, if we have land and it's at our disposal, why are we not banking that? Why are we not deed restricting it? Like, we did this with a property a couple of weeks ago at council, where we said, we put a 55, I believe it was, I have to check, 55-year deed restriction, saying this is going to be set aside for affordable housing. That, that's the, that's really the main lever that we can pull. We can look at, at other nonprofits, SOUs, the school district, other things. As to the, as to the urban growth boundary, geographically, we can't grow here. We just, we haven't. I mean, it was, we've grown 0.1% in, you know, a decade. As to unhoused, we, that's, that's, that's a collaboration among the region. You know, we, we all have to pool our resources for that. Ashland can't go it alone, and we can't saddle even one section of the city with, with handling those. But we do have to match resources valleywide and work with our partners. That's the only way we're going to get there, because it is, it is a mental health issue.
I just want to follow up one more question, because we are currently just, you know, experiencing like homeless camps in, you know, I believe it's just overnight, or kind of right outside the city office building there. Is, is that an issue that would be addressed, or is that a plan? You know, what, what will that look like moving forward? Just that status quo, or is there a new plan?
Do you want me to start with that one? Sure. So two years ago, when we got on, people may recall that we had encampments in the plaza. We had it in the fire station. We had it at Triangle Park. We had it in front of the library. And, and local municipalities across the country were saddled with Boise versus Martin Johnson Grants Pass. You had a ruling there that was, that was tying municipalities' hands to You, you had a ruling there that, that was, that was tying municipalities' hands to be able to come up with ideas. And the idea that, that we were able to work with is, is, it's, it's what's called time, place, and manner, is, is can, you, you cannot just tell people to move. You have to be able to provide a place with time, place, and manner. So, again, this is one of those, those ideas, where at the time, you have to balance the functioning and well-being of all residents, at the same time, you care for people who are the most vulnerable in our community as well. And at the time, we thought, okay, is there, is there a place that will, that will, that we can make available, that city-owned property, that will work as a place for people to be able to, that are, that are, quite frankly, living in a tent? And how can we help, can we give them a place overnight? It wasn't the best decision. I mean, it was the best of all available opportunities at the time, and we are, we are actively working to solve that. We are actively working to figure out new and, and novel ideas to be able to make that work. But it is, you are, you, you do need to solve mental health issues, you do need to solve for, for drug issues, you do, that, it's, it's extremely complex. So how do we match our resources in Ashland with helping as many people as we can? That's the best we can do.
Thank you.
Sure.
And the opportunity, if you'd like to expand on your opinions of the camps, or?
Probably not. I appreciate Mr. Dale's explanation about, it wasn't admittance of, of a poor decision, it was just like, they were doing the best that they could at the time, and I, it's such a complex issue, and the resources are limited, but they are there. As I said, there's grants available, and there are resources with, throughout Southern Oregon, so I'm going to leave it with, with his answer, and appreciate him for giving that detail.
Thank you for the explanation, and thank you for sharing that. And we have a little bit more time, and so I thought I would just follow up real quick with a discussion brought about infrastructure, and I know one of the things that is on the infrastructure list right now is the water treatment facility, and, and that kind of ties back maybe even into the second question about funding. So, I think, Kelly, you're first on this one?
Sure. Right. So this issue of the water treatment plant, I have, I have vacillated, to be really honest with you. I've, first I was, no, we don't need to, to create a whole new debt for the city, for the, for the residents and the taxpayers at 75 million, I might, you might be able to correct me or, or confirm, but then I've gone to listening to other perspectives, and our Public Works Director, Scott Florrie, and learning more about why it's a failed proposition to try and rehab it, and we need a new one. But, I'm swinging back on the other side, and that's okay, because November 5th is the day I need to make my decision. And gathering all the resources, gathering all the perspectives, gathering all the information that I can, is the best way that I can make the best decision on this. And my father was a State Farm insurance agent, and so gambling, he would never go gambling, and gambling with our, our well-being and having clean water is something I'm not ready to do, and I am leaning towards, yes, we need to pull the trigger and, and build a new water treatment plant. Scott Florrie, the Public Direct, Works Director, did tell me that it would go where there is a gravel pit, not far from the reservoir, and that's, that placement just seems problematic, it doesn't seem like it's big enough, it, but of course, the engineers that have worked on this for, I think since 2011, there's been proposals put out, and I think more should be revealed. Again, this communication, here are the reasons why they want the new plant built, here are the reasons why we might be able to rehab it, and what that would cost, and that information should be readily available to residents, and I don't feel that it is. So transparency is key to my, to my campaign, and one of my key priorities.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. This is one where I, I'm not going to fit it all in three minutes here, but I will start at the end here, which is, all the information is there. When I started digging into this, I was able to find all this information right on the city's website, going back to 1991. And quite, quite frankly, I'm, I'm frustrated that this issue wasn't solved, the issue of figuring out our, our sustainable, resilient water supply years ago. This, this issue has been coming up time and time and time again, for two decades and longer, and we're finally here. And the question is, is when are we going to make the decision to actually truly put our money where our mouth is and think about our future? We talk about paying it forward, people are asking, how are we going to pay for this? Well, my question is, is, so you're asking my children to pay for it in 20 years? You, you have to start somewhere, there's an overlap, it's, it's, you don't, on what, you don't replace your roof one shingle at a time. I've been to the water treatment plant, the first thing I did when I came on council is I had all of the apartment heads take me in through all of the infrastructure, did tours of wastewater, electric, water, fiber optics, show me where it's at. We went up there, and it, it's, it's a museum. It really is. It is no joke, what is up there, and I am, I have no desire to patchwork this together. It was built in 1948, and it is, it is scary to think that when you lose water to a community, your community dies, full stop. We're seeing this in Shady Cove right now. So the point being is, is, is how do you get ahead of it? And we finally have to, because this isn't going to come online for another 10 years. But you don't just all of a sudden have this thing have a catastrophic failure, and then start from zero and wait 10 or 15 years for water while that's happening. TAP is an emergency system only, and it only serves a fraction of what the city needs, and only in a certain geographic portion. So that's off the table. And if you were to build it, that would, that would cost more than the water treatment plant. And, and why would I rely on, as much as I appreciate our community partners in many respects, why would I rely on other people to provide me water, our community water when we have it here? So the, the second thing is, is again, how are you going to pay for this, right? And this, what's at issue this, this November on, on the ballot is, is, is one way to do a, is one way to go about it, which is, if this measure doesn't pass, and that's fine, the voters have every right, but they need to understand what they're voting on, too, which is, it would be more expensive, you'd have to go out and purchase a bond, and, and you would just start paying on day one, as opposed to kind of like a, like a line of credit that you would have on your house, where you can draw on it, the need, it's fixed interest rate. And if we get grants, great, we don't have to draw on that, but this is just in our hip pocket to be able to use, to think about the future. I am, the, the last thing I will say is, someone asked me recently, why should I pay for water that I'm not going to use? And my response was, well, who do you think paid for the water that you're drinking now? So we owe it to our future generations.
Great. Thank you for your time. I believe we have just a little bit more time today, so we'll go ahead and give you guys two more minutes for closing statements, and I think you said, so Jeff, will you start us off with your closing statement?
Sure, sure. You know, I thought, when, when you guys sent us the, the format, we talked about a closing statement, I thought long and hard about it. And I, I want to go back to what was really the, kind of the end of my opening statement, which was, this is my home. I was born here, I, I work with, with, I'm a flight instructor and a pilot, and I, so I train pilots and locally here, and they're, they are, most of my students are looking to move, move on, and the, and the instructors that are training them, they're looking to become pilots and move out of here, too. And my first line when I, when I meet a new pilot is, when they ask me, are you going to be around to finish the job? Are you going to be around to see me through my train, to see me? And I said, my, my response is always, and I'm extremely proud of it, which is, you will be leaving this valley before I do. This is home, this is my forever home. And, again, the things we take for granted, and people can, I, I love having these conversations, I, I enjoy people being, to critiquing us, that's how we come up with better ideas, that's how we get to a better place. But, at the end of the day, you have to jump in and help. You have to give your time. Your time and your resources are the most precious thing that we have, and you give back, and you pay it forward. And, you know, as I drove by the high school on the way here, there's still the banner, and I think about it all the time, it was when I, I was, I was not a very good player here, but I played for, for Coach Kitchell, and the banner's still up there, it says, and it just, it defines our community, which is, we love and care for each other. And that's what this is about. We can have disagreements, we can, we can, we can tease out the best way to do things, but at the end of the day, we're in this together. We're in this together. So I, I just appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Kelly?
So, my values and beliefs drive my actions, and they've always been my guiding light as to how I behave. I'm a hard worker. I believe in this community, and serving as a councillor will be a privilege, and it will be a responsibility that I do not take lightly. Fiscal responsibility in the form of conservation, because the water treatment plant will cost a lot of money, and I feel that right now, the council spends more than they should. I'll just put it that way, for simplicity's sake. And I feel that there are ways to rectify that, and we should have a better transparency. The communication that Jeff speaks of, I've found lacking in this council, and I want to improve that, as I've, as I've already stated, because in, in negotiating or discussing the 5G cell tower issue across and throughout our town, which was approved, that 5G ordinance will actually increase our carbon footprint. You have to install these antennas, they have to be connected to electricity, and that is contrary to the SEEP goals, the Climate, Climate Energy in Action Plan. So, transparency, fiscal responsibility, conservation, communication, and health and wellness. It's my understanding that at one point, before the pandemic, there was a push to become a blue zone for our city. Clamath Falls and Astoria are already on the path to become blue zones. If you don't know what that, that is, there are communities where people live very healthy into their 90s and 100s, and we are ripe for that opportunity to become a blue zone. And wouldn't that be wonderful as an attractant to bring more people here? So I'm really, I'm really jazzed, I'm really excited for this opportunity, because collaboration and hearing differing, differing points of views is how we come to solutions. And that is going to be my key feature as a new city councillor.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies, for taking the time to come meet with us today, and that concludes our forum. So, also thank you to the RV TV crew, thank you guys. Yeah, best of luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli, thank you, Eric.
Thank you both. It was great.
Great.
Thanks.